All right.
Quick question then, Ali.
Excuse me.
Ali, if you, if you don't approve the January 6th, we'll be getting notices to the hearing date.
All right. Okay, let's hold on one second. Let's go before we go forward. Let's, well, everyone, let's, let's put a cotton on the table right now. Let's, uh, we, I would like to call for a special meeting on January 6th, 2020. Can I have a motion for this? 2021?
2021.
Correct. Do I have a motion for that, please?
So moved.
So moved by Jim, I have a second.
My second, Richard Sumpel.
Second by Richard. All in favor say aye.
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 I, Veronica Devenese.
Jacob Morrison, aye.
Okay, and Nazir Akalasi, aye. So it's a go, it's a January 2nd, we have a hearing. So, so we got.
January 6th.
January 6th.
6.
January 6th, sorry, January 6th.
Thank you, Nazir. That solves that problem. Good night.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move forward to 28-20 Lynn's story of Story Harland, Harlem, Harlem Morton Life Estate, care of Lockwood Architect for 66 West Boulevard. Can you, wanna do that, please?
All right, sir.
The zoning board of appeals will hold an online public hearing on December 9th, 2020 at 6:30 PM to consider petition number 2820 for a special permit and/or variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 622 and Article 13, Section 1352 under the Wareham zoning bylaws. For Lynn's story of Story Harland Morton Life Estate, care of Lockwood Architects, PO Box 95, onset mass proposing to demolish a small portion of the dwelling in order to construct a rear addition at 66 West Boulevard, onset mass, accessories map, 1 lot 688 in the OV2 zoning district.
All right, who's, who's representing this matter?
Um, I am Bill Lockwood, uh, Lockwood Architects here on behalf of the clients.
Okay, wanna tell us what you're doing?
Uh, yes, uh, place the board. Um, we are, uh, the existing house has been there since 1890 or so. Been in single ownership or single family ownership since then. Um, the, uh, two additions at the very rear of the structure are, are in poor repair and are looking to be replaced. Um, so we are planning to tear those down and replace, uh, the, the functions there. Uh, the same functions in the same, essentially the same place, but slightly larger. Um, the work is within the setbacks as, as the other portions of the structure. And, um, so we will be increasing the, um, footprint slightly, increasing the FAR slightly, reducing the impervious service, surface, uh, as a, uh, by removing pavement. So, um, it, uh, will actually be reducing the height of the structure, um, because we'll be, um, taking one portion of roof down and, um, uh, putting on another a lower roof on that portion as well, which also incorporates the new structure. Um, as I see Ken has placed the drawing up there on this, on the screen. So it, as, as the drawing is presented, it's in the upper right-hand corner, in that very sharp corner. Um, so that's, that's where we're doing it. In your packet, you can see a, a picture of the existing structure. You can also see a picture of the, uh, proposed structure. Um, and you have to answer any of the board's questions.
All right, is it, so this is the existing. Where's the proposed one? Can you, can you?
It's on the same sheet. Uh, there's existing conditions he's showing now.
Okay, with the, with the shaded ones, right?
Uh, yeah, if he scrolls down, uh, on, on the drawing, he, he will show the proposed conditions.
Oh, okay. All right, uh, board members, Veronica, start.
So, um, I see we have the proposed addition and, but, um, can you head up on the, the existing? I have in the packet, um, the proposed, but I don't see the existing in, in the packet. Is the existing condition in the packet?
You should have one drawing, the, the drawing that he's showing you, and it has both existing and proposed conditions on that drawing.
I see, I see only existing. Where's the proposed?
Um, the, the, the drawing has got a, the top of it has existing and demolition. The bottom has a, as proposed.
The SKA 1.6 is what's proposed, right?
Uh, oh, uh, yes, that would be our drawing. That'd be the architectural drawing. Yes. At 1.7, yes.
I see on there is where your new plan is, and then there's a light blue outline of the old existing. Is that correct?
Uh, the blue is the proposed. Yes, the light blue dashed line is the existing, which is being removed. Plus there's a, um, a, a section of a, kind of a porch overhang, um, right beside it. The, the existing building is about 81 square feet with about 57 square feet of overhang, total of 138 square feet. The, the proposed construction is 149 square feet with 16 feet of overhang for 165 square feet.
Basically, you're cleaning up the edge of that house on your, on the house on the left. And you're gonna just bring it around and you're gonna keep the setback off of the property line at 2 foot 6. Keep that until you clean it up to get the two bathrooms in, is what I see.
That's correct. Um, we are increasing the setback on each of the two affected property lines, yes. Um, to the north, we're bringing it back about 2 feet. Um, and to the east, we're bringing it back about 9 inches, something like that.
Okay, well, I guess Richard understood it well. So Richard, wanna, uh, just give us your comment on it. I still don't get it. I don't see the proposed. I see the existing, but I don't see the proposed.
Proposed is right on the screen right now, Nazir.
Yeah, but it says existing dwelling. It still says existing.
Well, the existing dwelling is gonna stay there. Um, we're only talking about the hatched portion in the back.
Oh, okay. Oh, all right, all right. Now I get it. Now I get it. Yeah.
We're talking about a very small portion of the structure.
Oh, okay. Proposal overhang. Okay, so how, so the setbacks are staying the same?
No, we are increasing the setbacks.
Whi- which side?
Uh, on the north side, um, we are increasing it from 1.8 feet to 3.6 feet. And on the east side, we're increasing it from 2.2 feet to 2.5.
Okay, so very well. Good. All right, so this matter, Mr. Sam, Mr. Conti is gonna sit on this case. And we're gonna go to Veronica. Veronica, start. What are you gonna say?
I don't have any questions.
All right, very good. Uh, Jim? Jim, any comment? Okay, I don't hear Jim. Let's go to Jake. Jake, do you have any comments?
No comments.
Okay, Jake?
Yeah, no comments at this time.
And Mr. Conti?
Um, I don't have any comments. I'd like to hear if there's any public opinions.
Right, we'll go to this. All right, end up bubbling. Anyone in favor of this project?
Uh, this is John Kellagru, 64 West Boulevard, on the, on the, on the north side.
And you in favor?
Yeah, do you understand? Do you, do you hear me?
Yes, are you in favor of this project?
So my question, I mean, I, I think the addition itself is, is fine, whatever. What they're doing here to meet all these kind of crazy, uh, impervious and all that is, is this is all paved on the, on the north, on the north side. And it's continuing pavement that goes right to my house. So I'm concerned about how they're gonna, how they're gonna do that and not damage my pavement and more important, my foundation. As well, um, there's a part of the front, the top left on the screen, is actually grass. And I want, I'd like that to remain grass, you know, we share it. But, uh, so I just wanted those two points. You know, we're doing a lot of like disruption on this side, which you wouldn't have to do, but it's to meet some percentages that we're not meeting anyways. We're just improving them some. So, uh, I'm concerned with that.
Uh, Mr. Lockwood, what do you have to say about this early contractor? Is your contractor with you?
Um, yeah, the, we will be, um, yeah, increasing the, um, increasing the pervious surface on the site. Um, to reduce the runoff to the, to the cove. Um, we can saw cut down along the property line so that, uh, we're not disrupting, uh, uh, Mr. Kellagru's paving. Um, we would like to pave the, that portion that we're reserving for parking for the two spaces for this lot. But we can park on the grass if we need to.
All right, well, the most important thing, if, if the board is to, uh, grant this permit, you will have to have pre-construction meeting with their borrowers and make sure everybody on the same page and you're not disturbing his yard or his, or his land or his foundation, whichever is necessary.
We, we will need to have a pre-construction meeting with the conservation anyway. Um, and certainly, uh, Mr. Kellagru is welcome to attend that.
No, no, I'm not talking conservation. You have to do what you have to do, but, but with pre-construction, you have to sit with the neighbor. Your contractor has to sit with the neighbor and address the issue and encroaching to his land. So you cannot go and wreck his yard. I, it's tough, it's tough aside, but you still have no right to go in his yard and wreck it unless he agrees to it.
I, I, no, no argument. We can, uh, um, uh, define the property line quite clearly and, uh, make sure that everybody stays off of the, uh, Kellagru's property.
Okay, very good. So let's go, uh.
Question. Do we?
Do I have another question?
Did I just?
One second, Mr. Kellagru, go ahead.
Can I just follow up on it? Did I hear that this grass portion on the upper left is gonna remain grass? Is that what was just said?
Lockwood, you hear that?
I, I, I heard that. If that's a condition of the board, um.
He's asking a question. Is it gonna stay grass?
Yes, John, yes.
We, we were proposed, um, I'm sorry, um, Lynn?
This, this is, this is Lynn's story. I'm the part owner of that property. And yes, John, that will, you, the little space down by your, your flagpole will stay grass.
Great, Lynn, thanks.
You're, you're actually, you're actually gonna end up with more grass over there.
Yeah, then I'll have to maintain.
That, that you'll, that you'll have to mow, okay?
All right, thank you. Thank you, sir. All right, we go, we go forward. Other board members for comment? All right, I hear none. Okay, going back to the public. Yes.
Hi, my, my name is Denise Hickson. I am the property owner at 22nd Street behind the, uh, story property at, it's lot number 690 on the map there. I just have a couple of questions, um, just so I, I'm clearly understanding the proposed project. Uh, please, if you could tell me the existing square footage of the existing property versus the proposed? The height of the existing, um, stuff that's being demolished versus the proposed? Whether they'll be maintaining an outside shower out in the back there, which they have now? And whether a survey of the lot will be completed before the construction takes place?
Mr. Lockwood?
Um, a survey of the property has been done. Um, they will have a, an outside shower.
Okay.
Um, the, uh, I think I stated earlier, and let me find my paper again here.
She's concerned about the heights. Is the height staying the same or within the limit?
Height, the height will be lower.
What will it be exactly?
I, uh, let's say, what's it say?
Existing versus proposed?
If it was, say, 16 feet, it will be 12.
Okay.
Cause I knocking off, is it the second story, I believe? That answer your question, ma'am?
Uh, ye- yes, uh, yes, it's, it's approximate. It's not definitive. Um, so I was just wondering if we could have a more definitive thing. And also you didn't, the existing uh, square footage that's being removed and what the existing is that's proposed. I just would like to know.
Well, I stated that earlier, Denise, uh.
I know, I, I didn't write it down and I was just wondering what it was.
Little bit, uh, and I would be happy to repeat it. Um, we're demolishing 81 square feet.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, uh, plus 57 square feet of overhang.
Yep.
A total of 138 square feet.
Mm-hmm.
We're proposing to construct 149 square feet plus 16 square feet of overhang of her 165 square feet.
So it's actually a little bit bigger?
Uh, yes, it is.
Okay, I, I misheard that as slightly smaller, so thank you for clarifying. When was the survey done?
When was the survey done, Bill?
Uh, the, the survey was done initially in 2006, I believe, and has been updated it within this past year.
Okay, I, I, cause I haven't seen any markings, so I was just wondering.
Yeah, I didn't see any markings, neither Bill, I mean, along my property line.
Uh, Bill, well, being, if I, if I may, be in a very like tight area, he might have to survey during, before construction. Be, to, to maintain.
No, no argument. Uh, they, it will be surveyed before construction.
Okay, but let, let me ask you a question. If you're increasing the setback, how you adding 20 square feet? How, how this building, you added like about 25 square feet, but you decreasing the setback?
So we're moving more structure towards the, away from those two property lines.
Okay, you moving it west?
Moving it, uh, south, basically.
South? Okay. All right, okay. So ma'am, do you have any other question? Are you okay with this?
No, I don't have other questions. Thank you very much for, for addressing my, uh, questions. I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, anyone else in the audience would like to answer, uh, to, to ask question? Okay, I hear none. So, so to the board members, so apparently according to the commissioner here, if the board feel this is not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, we could treat it as a special permit. If the board feels it's substantially detrimental, we're gonna have to treat it as a variance.
58, whatever.
And then on the FAR, uh, on the floor area ratio, he's increasing like by 2%. But the non-conforming is increasing 1%. So, but it is an existing non-conforming, so I guess by special permit, we, he can increase the non-conformity. That's the table 622, Article 6.
I move that is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Okay, so before we do this, Jim, so let's move to close the public hearing. Anyone else wanna add anything before we close? Okay, I hear none. Go ahead, Jim.
And I, I'd actually, uh, speak in favor of the project as far as the, the neighborhood is concerned.
Can't hear you.
You know, that it's not detrimental to the neighborhood.
Okay, so the gentleman just speak is in favor. All right, Jim, let's move to close.
So moved.
Do I have a second to close?
I second Chris Conti.
Second by Chris. Uh, okay, all in favor to close, say aye.
Aye, Jacob Morrison.
Aye, Richard Sumpel.
Hi, Veronica Devenese.
And I, Nazir Akalasi. Okay, so public hearings closed. So then now with the motion, if the board feel is not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood.
So moved.
So, okay, so, so Jim think is substantially not detrimental to the neighborhood, so therefore it's a special permit. Do I have a second on that?
I second Chris Conti.
Second by Chris. All in favor, say aye.
Jacob Morrison, aye.
Mr. Conti, aye.
Sumpel, aye.
Veronica Devenese, aye.
All right, Nazir Akalasi, aye. Okay, thank you. So, so it's a special permit. Now the wishes. On a special permit, we could put conditions.
I make a motion to approve as presented standard conditions.
Okay, I would like to add to this a pre-con, and a condition, Sonia, if you add it to the draft, to the decision, a pre-construction meeting must be with the neighbor before they start and it's surveying the lots for the property line showing before they start construction. That's a condition. Anyone, anyone else would like to add anything? Okay, I hear none. Do I have a second on these motions?
I second Chris Conti.
Second by Chris. All in favor, say aye.
Jacob Morrison, aye.
Chris Conti, aye.
Sumpel, aye.
Veronica Devenese, aye.
Okay, and Nazir Akalasi, aye. So it passed. Thank you. All right, next one. 29-20 Maria Colella, care of Lockwood Architects, special permit or variance 114, onset Ave. Kenny?
The zoning board of appeals will hold an online public hearing on December 9th, 2020 at 6:30 PM to consider petition number 2920 for a special permit and/or variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 621 and Articles 13, Section 1355 under the Wareham zoning bylaws for Maria Colella, care of Lockwood Architects of PO Box 95, onset mass, proposing to raise the existing dwelling and construct a larger residential structure at 118, onset Avenue, onset mass, accessories map 2 lot 1000A in the MR30 zoning district.
All right, applicant state your name, please.
Um, Bill Lockwood, uh, Lockwood Architects, uh, for the petitioner, I believe, Maria Colella is, uh, on the line here somewhere too.
Okay, so let us know what you.
I'm here.
Okay, wanna tell us what you're doing, Bill?
Okay, um, this is, um, the ship, ship and shore condominium association, which is eight, eight units of, um, single, eight single units, uh, composing a condominium association. Um, um, Maria owns unit number one. She's proposing to tear it down and create, and build a new unit of slightly larger size. She will be, so that will be, um, where there's no particular requirements for, um, for, um, FAR or lot coverage, um, and it is a unique property. Um, we are, there are no particular standards. It's, um, should be able to do it. So in your packet, uh, you have a site plan with a proposed existing conditions above and proposed conditions below. You have an architectural plan of what the, the new unit is going to look like. Um, you also have some, um, uh, other materials in your packet, including the deed. I apologize, I'm getting some phone calls on the phone that I'm trying to use here. Um, you also have a letter of support from the condominium association, picture of the existing, uh, structure, and an overall, the overall layout of the condominium association with the, um, the unit in question highlighted in yellow. Be happy to try to answer any questions that the board may have.
All right, okay, this matter, Mr. Uh, Mr. Conti will be saying on this one. All right, uh, let's start what by, with Veronica.
Um, I'm not sure what we're necessarily reviewing. Uh, because there are no bylaws regarding this, I, if I understand correctly, with what's going on with it.
I think I can answer that, Veronica.
Go ahead, Jim.
You, you, in order to tear a house down, you need to come and ask the zoning board if it's okay. That's the short version. Um, so they're just, they're not gonna move any closer to any of the lines. They just want a special permit to say, yeah, go ahead, tear one down, put one back in its place.
So they're not encroaching on setbacks or any of that stuff? Like they're not? Is this conforming?
We're not making the situation any worse. We're not going any closer.
Is it currently conforming?
Conforming.
It's non-conforming?
Correct.
Okay. I don't have any questions right now.
It's a pre-existing, I, as I read the Mr. Requena's letter, it's a pre-existing non-conforming. So that, in order for them to tear it down, rebuild that, apparently they need special permit. They are not increasing the non-conformity. They do wanna actually, where they still, I mean, they have 10.2, they proposing 10, and the rear setback is 10 feet, so they, they write on the money.
I, so what are the non-conformances?
It's, I think the size of the lot. It's an existing non-conformity, but I don't see this, uh, area is 47,000. Uh, wha- what size is the lot? That must be the footage.
The, the lot is 47,000 square feet with eight units, um.
Oh, okay, that's, that's.
If I did my math correctly, that would require 245,000 square feet.
Yeah, correct. So the, the square footage of the lot, there's eight units. Yeah, he needs like 240, something, 200 plus thousand square feet. That's the non-conformity.
Mr. Chairman, can I weigh in?
Yes, who's speaking?
David Requena, Building Commissioner.
Oh, hi, David. Yes, go ahead, sorry.
So, so what, what's happening with this property is it's, it's a single parcel with multiple units on it. It's in the MR30 zoning district, so it would, it would require 20 feet on, on the onset avenue side. It only has 10.2 feet. So it's gonna be knocked down and reconstructed in the same footprint to a, to a slightly larger footprint. That's why it requires a special permit. It's not reducing the existing non-conformity, but it is non-conforming and it is being intensified.
Okay.
In order to intensify a non-conforming building, it requires a special permit.
Okay, do you guys get that? Because the setback, they already non-conforming, they could intensify it. But if, say the setback, what, 20 feet, they can, they need a variance to go 19, but the setback is already 10.2, they could intensify it to 10. That's what Mr. Requena said.
I thought he was saying they're here because they are intensifying it.
They allow two where it's non-conforming. You could, and you could intensify if it's non-conforming. If it's conforming, if you wanna break the zoning, then you need a variance.
Right.
You understand that?
Other question?
It's already, so if you're enlarging a building that's already non-conforming, it can be done by special permit. If it was conforming today and they were proposing a non-conforming building, that's what would require variance, but in this, it can be enlarged or intensified by special permit.
So it cannot, because they're non-conforming, it kinda help them out, bottom line.
Right.
I have a question?
Yes.
The, the address is 114 onset Ave, and that's what the setback needs to be, 20 feet. The entry to this house is on, I believe, Chereck Ave, which is number one. You can't enter the front of this house from onset Ave, so what is the front and the back of the house?
Who, who's speaking? Richard?
Richard Sumpel.
Uh, yeah, Richard. Says, I'm sorry, I couldn't, I'm sorry, Richard, one second.
They have the ability to pick which road they wanna actually pull frontage off of. The address is on onset Ave, and our bylaw allows them to choose what road they wanna pull frontage from. So they could either pick Chereck or they could pick onset Ave. Um, which, which everyone helps some the best, but it has to be consistent. And, and, in, in this case, the onset avenue is, is the better option.
I, I, I understand. Thank you for the answer.
Thank you, Richard. Uh, Mr. Conti, do you have a question?
Um, no, I have no questions at this time.
Jimmy? Jimmy, you good? Ja- okay, Jake, you good?
Yes, I'm good.
All right. Just, it's, I'm, it's gotten late and I'm confused. Who said, on the previous hearing, Mr. Conti did? Mr. Sample, the previous one?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so Mr. Sample will vote now on this one. Uh, all right, anyone in the audience wanna speak in favor of this, uh, of this matter? Okay, I hear none. Anyone wanna speak against? Okay, I hear none. Before we go forward for closing, Mr. Lockwood, you wanna add anything?
Um, no, I'm, uh, uh, do wanna clarify one thing. Uh, the frontage is on onset avenue by, by statute, and that would be the 20-foot setback. We are not reducing that set, reducing from what we were. We're holding exactly the same thing. Uh, 9.6, uh, actually, there is an 8.8 existing setback, uh, which we're increasing, um, or getting rid of. So not to 9.6 would be the minimum in the new configuration. Yeah, I saw that, thank you.
Okay, very well. All right, anyone else would like, like to add something? Okay, if I hear none, let's move to close.
So moved.
Move to close by Jim. Do I have a second?
I second, Richard Sumpel.
Okay, all right, closed by Richard. All in favor, say aye.
Jacob Morrison, aye.
Sumpel, aye.
Veronica Devenese, aye.
Okay, and Nazir Akalasi, aye. Okay, and Nazia Kalasi, aye. Okay, on a special, okay, so public hearings close, and I assume there's no argument or discussion. All right, so on the matter of special permit, what's the wishes?
I'd move to grant the special permit as proposed, standard conditions.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Jacob Morrison.
Okay, any, any, any conditions on this you guys will do, or just standard conditions, anything else? Standard condition, okay, all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye, Jim.
Aye, Richard.
Veronica Devonese, aye.
And Nazia Kalasi, aye, and I guess Richard's voting on this, you said aye, Richard?
Yeah, yes, I did, sir.
Jacob's muted, but I'm sure he wants to say aye.
All right, very good, so it passed five zero zero. Very well.
Just like to say one, just like to say one thing, I'm gonna miss those windows on the end of each end of that building. I've always thought those are such an architectural design of its own creature, I don't think I've ever seen anything quite like that.
No, they are different, yes, yeah.
All right, very well, so let me open this, okay, thank you, thank you, man.
Good night.
You're good night. All right, here we come now, okay, the last hearing, last one, thirty dash twenty. Penrose L L C comprehensive permit, chapter forty B, for Littleton Drive, map fifty six, lot one. Let's start.
The zoning board of appeals will hold an online public hearing on December ninth, twenty twenty at six thirty P M. And to consider petition number thirty dash twenty for a comprehensive permit under M G L chapter forty B. To permit an affordable rental and senior housing project, uh, on the Wareham redevelopment authority property. Located at four Littleton Drive, Wareham, Mass, assessors map fifty six lot one in the M R thirty zoning district.
Who's, who's presenting for the developer?
Uh, Charlie Adams will start here, and I have some other folks with me that'll, that'll chime in.
Go Charlie, go.
Oh, great, um, so thank you, um, Mr. Chairman, other members of the board, we, um, we have a little, uh, PowerPoint slide we're gonna run through to, uh. Show you it, so if, if I could ask Ryan to take, uh, if you could get control of the screen, could put that up. Uh, and so while he's putting that up, just, uh, a few people that, um, here with us today, so I'm here from Penrose, I'm with Penrose. Ryan Kirakoff and Jenny Hayward, uh, Jennifer Hayward are with me as well from Penrose. And then we've got some, um, other members of our design team, uh, folks from our architecture, uh, T A T, Worsie Witten's, uh, our civil, uh, we have a traffic engineer. And, um, uh, I believe, uh, and our attorney, uh, Mark, uh, Brobowski, I don't, I think I covered everybody, I don't see if anybody else popped in, but if, um. If, uh, there's anyone else on my team, please let me know, we can do that, so what we're gonna do here is run through a, a presentation, I'm gonna do kind of, I'll do an overview. And then, um, and then we can, uh, as you, as you have questions, you know, the, the folks that, uh, know this, the professionals can, can chime in on the more. Specific and, um, specific answers on various questions, so. Uh, just briefly, again, my name is, uh, Charlie Adams, and we're talking about, uh, Littleton Drive, next slide. So I thought we'd just start a little bit about, uh, who we are as Penrose, uh, so Penrose is a forty year old, uh, owner, manager, and developer of, uh, of, of mixed income housing. Uh, we're in about, uh, I guess it's almost twenty states now in the District of Columbia. We've been doing this, I said, for about forty years, um, we, um, we do mostly, uh, mixed income and affordable housing, uh, although we do, uh, market rate as well. And it always is with, um, uh, multi-family components, so we'll do some, some commercial, but our bread and butter is, uh, is multifamily rental housing. Um, as you can see, we've done, uh, over seventeen thousand units in our fifty year history, we have our own affiliated management company, which Jenny, Jennifer Hayward is here with us. They manage right now about half our portfolio, and, um, uh, we do about fifteen types of these transactions per year across our, uh, portfolio, next slide. So, um, even though we're, you know, we're sort of a, a midsize company, uh, I still think we're, we act very nimbly, we're basically held, uh, private corporation, held basically by three principles. Uh, they're involved in all our transactions on a day-to-day basis, as I mentioned, the, uh, we're active in these twenty states, but we have specific offices, uh, in Boston. Our, our main office is in Philly, and then we have, uh, other offices in these other cities, and as I mentioned also, we have an affiliate managed company that, uh, that employs about four hundred people. Excuse me, next slide, please. Uh, just a little bit about, this is our, our approach, um, you know, these are our core values. Uh, we really try to engage the community to determine what their needs and desires are, uh, and that's why we're really excited about where we are here with you, uh, in Wareham, and we'll get into that. Um, this is really your vision of, um, of some things that you want to see on the site, and we're trying to, truly try to implement that. Uh, I think the, the key to our core values is really the one we on top is a collaboration, we really try to design these in a way that meets the needs and desires of the entire community, we're not interested in. Doing something that the community's not, uh, engaged and supportive of, and, uh, and we've gotten a great, uh, level of support from, from the community, uh, to date in Wareham, uh, and we're really excited about that, next slide. A little bit about our management company, you can hear more from Jennifer later, but, uh, they've been doing it for thirty-five years, as you can see, the portfolio is over a hundred and forty properties, uh, and over ten thousand units. And the key, the key is, uh, is that really is our management company is fully integrated into our design process right from day one. And, uh, again, we can get into that as we go through our, uh, program. Next slide, please. Uh, okay, so a little bit about our development team is a team that, uh, we've, we've worked with before, so we're not, uh, new to, to each other, and we're not new to this, uh, line of work. It's a team we've worked with in, in Eastham, um, in particular, and, um, and we've worked in a number of other transactions with these folks across the state, next slide. So a little bit about how we got here, uh, so, uh, as you are pretty, uh, much more aware than I, uh, the Wareham redevelopment authority put out an R F P. Back at the beginning of this year, uh, Mass Housing was a consultant, uh, to that process, uh, so we went through a competitive process, and we were actually selected, uh, by the Wareham redevelopment authority. Uh, as the developer to develop this, uh, this site, which as you all know is a, I think it's a nineteen seventies, a sort of former subdivision site, um, so I know you guys have been working for a long time to try to figure out how to do that. And come up with a plan to, um, to develop this area, next slide, please. So our progress to date, we made a lot of progress, um, we entered into an L D A with the, uh, redevelopment authority that laid out the basic, uh, plan for the site. Uh, we've gone through some preliminary plans and designs, we met a couple of times, uh, with the W R A to make sure that we're designing it in a way that meets the needs and desires. Uh, we presented to the select, uh, board, uh, they were very excited about it, we got a four oh vote from them, uh, in support of the project. Uh, so we've done a lot of the other due diligence work in terms of completing the survey, we've invested in finding out of doing phase one, um, obviously, we're here before you today. And, uh, the really exciting piece is we have been invited into, uh, the round, uh, the state round for, um, the funding that would be, uh, needed to, um, execute this development. So, uh, we hope to apply by January twenty first, uh, for, for that funding, which is still very competitive, but it's exciting that we got invited into the round, next slide, please. So, uh, for, you know, just to orient ourselves all to the site, again, you know it better than, than we do, it's right off of Swift Beach Road, which connects out to Route, to Route six, so it's a great location for folks. To, uh, to connect with the downtown area and some of the goods and services that you have along that route, next slide, please. Sort of, uh, zooming in, it's a very, very large site, so these, uh, what you see there, where you see Littleton Drive and Sussex Drive, these were the old roads that were originally laid out by the subdivision. We're not gonna be utilizing those, we're actually gonna be using a much smaller, much, much smaller footprint for the space than, uh, than the original, uh, nineteen seventies subdivision plan. Um, and we think that's really important because we're trying to keep the site as, um, wooded, uh, as forested, we're trying to maintain it as much as possible. And you'll see that in the plan, next slide, please. So, uh, a little bit about, um, our, our concept plan, uh, when we put in the original R P submission, we were, uh, we had a breakdown for what we called non-age restricted units and some senior units. Working with, uh, with the Wareham redevelopment authority, with Mass Housing and with D H C D, they were comfortable to allow us to do some more senior units on the site. And less of the non-age restricted, so we now have, uh, the breakdown of forty-nine non-age restricted units and forty-four senior units, next slide. So a little bit how that breaks down, obviously, or not obviously, but the senior, uh, units are all, uh, one bedrooms, that's usually the, the primary bedroom type when you're doing a, a senior building. Um, and then the non-age restriction are scattered amongst ones, two and three bedroom units, consistent with, uh, what the requirements are for the state in terms of how the. Number of, uh, bedrooms, they like to see it two and three bedrooms. In the senior building, all the units will be, uh, considered affordable to folks below, uh, sixty percent of the area mean income, that's the level that's, uh, required by the, uh, financing programs that we're tapping into. On the non-age restricted one, uh, the bulk of them will be below sixty percent, but we, uh, we do have enough room, um, in terms of our financing stack. To have eight of them, what we call workforce units, it's sort of that forgotten group that doesn't usually get, um, resources dedicated to them between the hundred and ten and the hundred and twenty percent of area mean income. Uh, one of the things that's really important that we'll try to advocate for is to give a local priority for Wareham residents during the first year, it's not automatic, it's something that the state looks at. Um, we were successful in getting that in the other communities in Massachusetts in which we've worked, so we're, we're cautiously optimistic that they'll grant that for us here as well. And again, one of the things I mentioned in one of the earlier slides is how much of the site is gonna be dedicated to open space. So we've really tried to minimize the amount of development on the site to create a community, but at the same time to keep the site as natural, uh, as possible. And in particular, really, I know that there's folks that have been enjoying, uh, some of the walking trails there, uh, over the past forty years or so, we're gonna try to maintain those trails, or if not maintain them, recreate them around the perimeter of the site to allow. Folks in the community to continue to walk their dogs and do other things through the site, and we encourage that, and we welcome people to, to take advantage of the location of the site, next slide, please. So, uh, this is, uh, this is our, our site plan, uh, it's a little bit in black and white, we'll get to some more colored versions of it, so if you look at the top of the screen, that's the connector that connects us, connects out to Swift's Beach Road. So, uh, right now, the way that the, uh, site, you know, was originally set up for was that there would be traffic to the right and to the left. We've decided that, um, we wanted to minimize that, so we've just created one access point in and out, uh, of the site, and it's a long winding road that leads you into the site, so we're trying to separate. You know, really to create a, uh, a, a sense of natural environment here, and to, uh, keep the units, uh, into the center of the site as much as possible. So as you entering that long windy road, coming down, the first thing you're gonna see at the bottom of the screen is the senior building, down in the corner, that's a forty-four unit senior building. Uh, you'll, actually, your eye will immediately actually be drawn to the clubhouse, which will be in the center of the site, which is right there. So that clubhouse, and you'll see some elevations for it, is where our management office will be, we'll have a full-time manager here for the site, there'll be a fitness room in there, a community room. Uh, space that'll be available not just for the residents, but for the community at large, uh, so if anybody needs to have meetings or things there, that there's not space in the, in the community now, they're welcome to use that space. And then it'll, uh, there'll be a back patio off of that, and you can see that in some of the elevations that we'll have. There'll be a looped road around, and then around the looped road are ten, um, individual, um, uh, buildings, each one has no more than four or five units. And, um, they're, they're nicely designed to, to sort of look and feel like small, uh, houses, and you'll get a sense of that. So what you don't see on here, um, you know, where you see that, that looped, that looped line throughout the back, that's actually a walking path. Um, and what you don't see in that, in that area, that's all gonna be natural, so we just put the, the limit of work here to show where the limit of work was. And our idea is that everything else be, behind that line will, will remain, uh, as it is now, as a forested area. Oh, and one thing that's important too, is that there is, um, the road loops in, at the bottom of the screen, there's an, an emergency, uh, access only, that's only for emergency access, I know that's really important to the. The, uh, residents, uh, south of, uh, this location, I believe on Nicholas, is the name of, of the, one of the roads over there. And the other community there, they, to make sure that traffic doesn't go through there. So that would be for emergency vehicles, uh, only, if that, if that's needed, next slide.
Excuse me?
Yes.
How would that emergency access be controlled?
So, uh, there's a number of different things that we could do, we could put a, um, a gate across it, um, we actually, um, in the last, uh, transaction we did, we actually just put, uh, bollard there, a lockable bollard. So that it would prevent traffic from coming in and out, but the bollard would have, you know, the, the fire department and the emergency, um, vehicles would have a key to access that, if, in, in the case of an emergency, that's how we typically would. Uh, control the access, um, so that people would not use that as a means in and out of the site. Uh, so here's, uh, a, a rendering of the site, so the senior building is at the top of the page, so if you think about this, off to the left is, would be the long road in, so Swift's Beach Boulevard, uh, Swift's Beach Road, excuse me, is off to the left. So again, you come in, you see the, the clubhouse in the center, senior building, uh, in the, uh, at the top, and then the ten, uh, little cottage style, uh, homes around clustered around, uh, a road. Uh, the center, we'll try to keep as natural as possible, um, we'll have, um, there'll be a detention basin in there, uh, which will, will seed with wildflowers, uh, for a nice, sort of a nice landscaped area. Um, and there's a playground that you've got down on the left, and then, as you can see, sort of walking trails, uh, throughout the, you know, interior of the site, and then we can't see them, but they're around the outside, next slide. So sort of coming in at ground level, this is how you would actually enter, this is the road in, directly in front of you is the clubhouse where the management office would be. So we always try to put our management office right, uh, at the, sort of the entry point to the site, so that there's eyes on the street, there's a sense of security. So the residents that live there, you know, feel, feel comfortable that, um, people are, you know, we're watching, and people are keeping an eye on people's coming and going, the senior building is, uh, off to the left. And you can start to see some of the, uh, individual townhomes off to the right, next slide. Oh, I'm sorry, could you just go back one slide for that, Ryan, I just wanna make one comment here if we don't forget, so. Uh, what we always try to do is put concrete sidewalks in our developments, we think that's really, uh, a, a nice amenity, good for long-term maintenance, um, rather than asphalt, so that's really what our goal would be here. What we're gonna try to do actually is take that sidewalk and try to extend it out all the way, um, up to Swift's Beach Road, um, we'd really like to try to do that as an additional amenity for, uh, this community and for the neighborhood. Um, and one of the things we've also talked about is to try to put in, um, a bus shelter on Swift's Beach Road, that's, that, that, uh, concrete walk would lead all the way out to Swift's Beach Road. And, um, we've, we've talked preliminarily with the bus company about putting one there, it would be, uh, something we would put in, there's already, there is a bus stop there, there's just no, I'm sorry, the bus stops there. Um, but there's no shelter there, so we think that'd be a great amenity for the entire community, as well as the residents that would live here, next slide. A little bit more focus of you of the clubhouse, um, you know, we're trying to keep it and make it look like a, a small, single-family home, I think our architects have done a good job with that. Uh, next slide. There's the back of the clubhouse, so you can see a patio off the back, that we would have a seating area for folks, it would be a concrete patio for people to be able to enjoy the outdoors. And, and right behind them is the large community room, which would include, um, a kitchen, uh, as well, so that people will be able to, um, serve meals and have functions there, next slide. Uh, another view of the clubhouse, uh, that shows you, um, I believe that's, that side would be where the fitness room is right now, that you're looking at from that angle, uh, off to the right is the senior building, next slide.
Hey, I'm sorry, I was muted, but if you go back two slides.
Sure.
You're looking at the clubhouse.
Correct.
At the retention area with the wildflowers that would grow in the summertime.
Exactly.
In the wintertime, everything would die, and what would that look like, is there anything proposed? That would, the wildflowers after they pass.
Rich, do you?
Warm weather?
Rich, do you wanna talk about that, Rich Clater?
If, if I may, if I may, everyone, this is a lengthy, uh, discussion, let the gentleman present the case. And, uh, and all the board members could write their questions, if we're gonna stop on each one, it's gonna defeat its purpose. So let him present that case, and then we go to questions, and apparently it's gonna be continued, then with town engineer with Chip and Sewell Water, all these things, but let him present the case before. It, it just, uh, doesn't make sense to stop him for specific things, so let him finish his case, then we go forward, if you guys don't mind. Go ahead, sir.
Sure, and we'll, we'll come back and answer that at the end, uh, I'll make sure we get you that answer. Um, okay, so here's a view of the, of the senior building, it's three stories. One of the things that we really, uh, wanted to do with the architect is really not have just a big, single-block building, so I think what the architects have done here is done a really nice job. Of stepping the building, uh, back and forth, um, creating different, uh, roof lines, um, peaks and valleys and gables. Uh, and change the materials both horizontally and vertically to really create, to break up the massing of the building, and so it doesn't come off as a single monolithic building, but as individual pieces connected together. Uh, and that would be the front door right there that you see, um. Behind the car, next slide. Uh, so here are some examples of the, um, small townhomes, uh, one of the things, uh, a hallmark of one of these designs is each one of these would be four or five units. Everybody will have their own individual entry, um, and that's really key and really important to us, um, all of the ground floor units will be zero entry as well, to make them, uh, what we call, uh, visitable. So not necessarily fully handicap accessible, but definitely visitable for folks that are mobility impaired. Uh, and that's a really important, um, concept, uh, each one of these units will also have their own washer and dryer in the unit, not just hookups, but we actually provide, uh, washers and dryers for everybody, next slide. Please, uh, here's just another, uh, view, aerial view of the, um, center of the development. Next slide. Uh, and here's some of the elevations, and we, we can get into a little bit more of, uh, of these ones. And here's some of the elevations, and we we can get into a little bit more of of these when turn the questions and answers with the architects. Next slide. So here's the floor plan for the senior building. So you would enter at the bottom. And then typically, we would have, you know, in a building like this, if it was if it was standalone by itself, we'd have a management office. But since we have the clubhouse across the street, we can afford not to do something, some other things with the space here. So we've created an additional community room here right across the the hall, so the residents can have an area to congregate here as well. We'll have a small, we call it supportive services office for folks that for folks to meet with folks. We'll bring in caregivers and things like that of people to meet with folks. There are two elevators in the building. We always like to have two elevators just to make sure that.
Can I interrupt real quick, please, sir?
Please, yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate. I know, I appreciate the buildings, but can we talk about other things, the road and all those things?
No, Jake, Jake, if I may, this is a process. It has to go. And this is, it's gonna be, it's gonna be presented properly, and it has to take its course. We cannot let the gentleman finish his case. All these things will come into play. We, like I said, we cannot piecemeal in it. Let the gentleman do his thing. And and then our questions will be laid out and everything we cannot. If we're gonna interrupt, this gentleman will never finish. Let him do.
Why are we here then?
Excuse me, listen, listen to me. You're absolutely right. That's why we're here to answer. Let him finish this presentation, then we go into it. This is not a small matter that we could get a quick answer. You know, I I totally understand your concern. Let him finish, then we go into argument, all right, if you guys don't mind.
Yeah, I'm almost at the end anyways.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, sir.
So this is all one bedrooms, well, trash rooms on every level, and there's laundry rooms on every level as well. Next slide. This is just another, this is what the second and third floors would look like, pretty standard. Here, though, we do have central laundry for the seniors. We we create laundry rooms, not to put to take up space within their units with washers and dryers. Next slide. Here's some of the elevations. Again, we can talk about some of the materiality, the townhomes. Next slide. These are some of the floor plans as one of the things you pick up here is, as I mentioned, there's a each of the units has their own individual entry. So some you'll you'll enter on the ground floor and go directly up a set of stairs to units that would be on the second floor. Next slide. This is the the floor plan for the community room that I mentioned before. You can see where we talked about the fitness room, the community room, the lobby, two bathrooms, and then the management suite of offices that we have. Next slide. These are the just the program elements that I had mostly that I had talked about already. The one thing I don't think I mentioned was we're going to do a community garden here, and I did mention the bus stop. And I think that's it.
All right, very good. Just a couple of things before we start. It's very important that you guys open a fifty-three G account.
Okay.
All right, you have to open a fifty-three G account. And just a quick view for the people who doesn't understand how did this land come about and stuff. This property owned by the town for a very long time. And the town, I guess, in conjunction with the housing authority put out for bids. And apparently, Penrose LLC, I guess, won the bid. Correct me if I'm wrong, sir. Is that true, Mr. Adams?
Yes, I mean, yeah, Ken, I think Ken and Ken's on, and I think in France is on, they can talk, they can talk more about their.
No, I just want to see, like, I just want to explain to the people how you come up to this.
Yes, yes, there was a competitive process, and we were selected. I believe there were three applicants and.
And apparently, you guys went to the selectman, and you get the hosting agreement.
We got, yes, we have the, we got a support of the project, a four O support of the project, and I believe.
Did you get the state, what do you call it, the state?
We got the project eligibility letter.
Eligibility letter, okay, very well.
Received this project.
Before, before we get into the the questions with the board member, we're gonna need the safe harbor declaration from you.
Mark, do you want to speak to that?
Forty B safe harbor. Do you know, like, that percentage in the town, the 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 square footage? I'm sure you comply, but we're gonna need it in in writing.
Yeah, Mark, do you want to comment on that, Mark, our attorney? Is Mark on mute? Did we lose Mark?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman Mark Bobrowski. I'm representing the applicant this evening. My office is in Concord, where I work with my partner, Paul Haverty, whom I believe the board knows.
Yes.
The board asked about safe harbor. Right now, it's my understanding, based on the two thousand seventeen subsidized housing inventory, which is the one posted on DHCD's website, that town is about seven point seven percent. That's seven hundred and sixty-four countable units and nine hundred and ninety-eight permanent. I'm sorry, ten percent of your your permanent residents would be nine hundred and ninety-eight. So you have about two hundred and twenty-four units to go to get to ten percent, and you have ninety-three proposed this evening.
All right, so we we did the math, Mr. Chair.
I just want to, for the record, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, we did the math. It actually brings your percentage up almost a full percent, this project, but even just by itself.
All right, very well. Apparently, like, again, we're gonna go to, I I'm sure board member and everyone else is gonna be discussing sewer capacity, water capacity, fire, police, stormwater management, landscape, and all these things. I just want to make it clear to the board, we cannot discuss school capacity. It's illegal to discuss school capacity at forty Bs. As well as police, we could ask, discuss police technical question. We cannot say, oh, the police, not enough, not enough police. That's kind of illegal as well as school. Just to make it clear, we cannot get into it. I'm sure the attorney will explain it to us. And that being said, we're gonna start, I believe. Let me, I I gotta talk to my board member. That's gonna be few few hearing, just all the board members. We need commitment. Who's gonna be able between Jake, Mr. Conti, and Mr. Sample? Can you commit to attend all the hearings?
Yes, sir, Jacob Morrison.
Jake will attend, okay, and I guess, Mr. Sample, Mr. Conti, can you both attend?
Yes.
Okay, and I believe in this one, Mr. Sample, Mr. Sample gonna be sitting in this one for Mr. Cruz, Mr. Conti, you could like engage with the argument, everything, but I believe Mr. Sample will be voting. Veronica, can you attend all the hearing? Can you commit to this?
Yes.
And I'm I'm sure Jim always committed and as well as myself. Okay, so the board's gonna be Veronica, Jim, Barack, Barack, Jim Akabachi, Nazir Okolasi, Jake Morrison, and Mr. Richard Sample. They'll be the voting members for this matter. That being said, we're gonna start with ladies first. So Veronica, and there's gonna be a lot of questions, but let's make small small questions, because I want to get to the public tonight before we continue. So we cannot ask too many questions. There's more hearings to ask, so we want to give a chance to the public. So we're gonna start with Veronica as as small as possible, couple of minutes at the most. Go ahead, Veronica.
I'm gonna make it the smallest. I don't have any questions right now.
Very good. We're gonna move to Mr. Sample, Richard.
This may be a little silly, but we're the zoning board of appeals, and this is being brought for us. So it's the process for us to appeal as we go. This is along with the Sandwich Road one. We have no plans. The guy, the gentleman keeps bringing in things. I mean, I'm just confused of our role in this.
Okay, our our rule, the and and first of all, we cannot like compare it to other projects. Sandwich Road is its own project. It's not a forty B project. This is a forty B project, completely different process. This one, in a way, somehow the state supersede the town laws. So if you really and really take this property and build a regular subdivision, you probably get ten or twelve houses. But because it's a forty B, it's restricted by the state. That being said, let's not discuss other project and try to hope you'd get it as we go, you'd understand it. I don't understand what you mean by appeal. What are you talking about appeal? We keep appealing. You said, Mr.
I mean, you you, when the zoning board, the zoning board, they get turned down, they come to us with an appeal.
Right. No, this is a different, that's not a forty-eight, that's a chapter state, chapter forty B, that's completely, that are forty-eight. So in other words, they don't go to the building commissioner, and the commissioner said, oh, you can't do it. And they come to us. That's not an appeal. That's a process. It starts as a forty B. They go to the state, they get the eligibility letter, they come to the selectmen, get some sort of hosting or welcome agreement or which is irrelevant, whether the state, whether the selectman says, we don't like it, or we like it. It's pretty much, it's not in our hand or the town's hands, pretty much the state. But it's always good for a positive comment from the selectmen, which they did in this matter. And apparently, it's their land. They gave their land. So it's a little different process. If you, apparently, it's your first time in that forty B, but you'll get the hang of it as we go forward. And we could always discuss more questions. You could call me, call Ken, or somebody explain it more to you.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Bobrowski, the applicant's attorney. I I do know that the board has recent experience with forty B, but I can see that there are forty-five participants on this Zoom call. And I'm suspecting that many of them are from the immediate neighborhood, and they've not had any experience with forty B. If I took two minutes to explain the basics, do you think that that would be useful?
Yeah, two minutes, we're gonna make it short. Go ahead.
So this is addressed primarily to the people in the audience, and if you're represented by counsel, I apologize to your counsel. Forty B was adopted in nineteen sixty-nine. It's a driver in the state for affordable housing. Back in the oh four, oh five, oh six period, twenty-five percent of the building permits in the Commonwealth were issued via chapter forty B at that time. The basic premise here is that it's one-stop shopping. It's a comprehensive permit at the Board of Appeals. All other local boards are subsumed within the authority of the Board of Appeals. So if, for example, the land needs to be subdivided, the Board of Appeals can do that. If there's a curb cut permit that the Board of Selectmen issue, that's in the Board of Appeals' power. The only exceptions to that are the State Building Code, the State Wetlands Act, and other things like Title V governing construction works permits or sewer. The basic premise here is that the projects are internally subsidized. There's no money in the federal government to hand out to build affordable housing. These projects subsidize the affordable units by having a ratio. The ratio at a minimum must be twenty-five percent affordable, seventy-five percent market rate. This is a rental project, so twenty-five at a minimum percent of the units will be affordable, and seventy-five percent may be market rates. The beauty for the town is that where that is the case in a rental project, all hypothetically, if this were a hundred-unit project, it would be twenty-five affordable, at least seventy-five market rate. But all one hundred units would count towards the S H I. When Charlie said that it would come close to giving you one percent, one percent right now is nine ninety-eight point eight. This is a ninety-three unit project. All the units will count. So the Board of Appeals has the authority in in implementing this to grant the comprehensive permit waiving some of those local regulations. Typically, a waiver is granted where the existing zoning or subdivision or Board of Health regulations will render the project uneconomic. That is, the project can't be built under the standards in the zoning. If this is a single-family residential district, you can't build what's up on the slide because that's a multifamily. So a waiver must be granted for the multifamily in order to make the project real. As long as the municipality is under ten percent, there is a presumption built into the law that the need for the housing outweighs local concerns. Local concerns are typically what you would think of in a variance or a special permit case. Stormwater, traffic, health concerns, neighborhood character. But where the town is under ten percent, there's a presumption that the need for the housing outweighs those local concerns. The weight of the local concern, according to the HAC's regulations, will be commensurate with the degree to which the environment is endangered. The 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 housing itself is seriously deficient or health and safety is imperiled. I didn't choose any of those words. Those are in the regulation, endangered, imperiled, seriously deficient. So it's not your grandfather's variance or special permit, whereas just a simple balancing test of detriment versus benefit. This is a much more complicated matter in which the presumptions favor the applicant because the state wants to see affordable housing get built. That's the basic lay of the land. In the event that the developer is approved a comprehensive permit, but conditions are rendered, which renders the project uneconomic, and there is a certain threshold for that. The developer has the right to appeal, and only the developer has the right to appeal to Boston, where the Housing Appeals Committee sits to hear such appeals by developers. If it's denied, the same path would apply for the developer. Neighbors have ordinary appeal rights in Land Court or Superior Court, but the HAC is solely a matter between the developer and the state's agency Housing Appeals Committee, which is designed to hear the process. There's there's also income, I'm sorry, there's also limited dividend aspects to a chapter forty B, which set what what would commonly be understood as a profit limitation. But I need not go into that for the audience to understand what's coming forward for the next couple of meetings here. Thanks for the, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that explanation, sir.
So, Mr. Sample, would you, we could comment, we could talk to you about the detention basin, if you had some questions about that, was that?
We're not, Mr.
We'll talk that future.
Exactly, because I would like to hear from the neighbors quick. We'll we'll discuss these details after. Richard, do you have a quick question, or we could go forward?
Go forward.
All right, Jimmy.
Let's hear the public yell and scream.
All right, very well. Jake, Jake.
I have very, very many questions, but I won't talk about it tonight because it's already getting late.
Right, all right, just write them down for next one. Mr. Conti.
I don't have, I don't have many questions right now.
All right. We got, okay, we gotta go to the, we gotta go to the public quick, but please, all the public. First of all, I want to hear if there's anybody in favor of this project, anybody in favor. Okay, I hear none. Apparently, everyone here is opposed to the project. My recommendation.
Oh, no, that's, that's not true. I just have questions before I say I'm in favor.
Okay, all right.
I think that's fair.
That's not true.
All right, all right, hold on, before we go forward, let me suggest something. If any of you, like neighbors and friends, it's always best like to be three, four people and one person speak. So this way, it makes more sense, it's more efficient, more to the point. So we're gonna start first with Mr., the other gentleman who says, I have a question before in favor against the other gentleman. What's your name, sir?
Andrew.
Andrew Rodriguez. I live at sixteen Littleton Drive.
Okay.
My house is actually the one, if you go back to the the lot map, it's the one on the left with a road. If you're walking down that supposed road that you guys are gonna build, my house is the first one on the left.
Okay.
So my concerns are normal stuff, drainage, runoff, sewer, and also foot traffic, and also construction traffic. I bought this house two years ago. I knew that they were gonna eventually end up putting something in like this. I didn't know it was to this magnitude. And now what I'm worried about is, you know, the construction vehicle is going in and out. You know, it is a small little neighborhood, which I'd like to keep it at like that. I'm not in favor of this big development plan. Originally, I was told it was supposed to be two ins and outs of the neighborhood, which you guys changed. So I'm just not in favor of all the foot traffic, car traffic, construction traffic, all of that. I mean, you guys already started with doing samples of the land, of the soil. You guys dumped off a machine this morning. There's a truck parked right on the side of my house. You guys got the construction equipment in the back already. So, you know, I'm already not feeling comfortable with this whole thing going on.
Okay, just your address for the record, Andrew.
Sixteen Littleton Drive.
Okay, thanks, Andrew. All right, the other gentleman or lady was, wants to speak. I I don't have you on the screen, so you just gotta come.
I think there was a Maureen Calery.
Mrs. Calery.
Microphone muted right now.
Yes, it's not that I necessarily had something to speak. I wanted to hear everything, but I will comment.
Yes. Your address, Maureen, just your.
I'm at Cranberry Grove Way, and we are in the fifty-five plus development.
Okay.
I'm in one of the units there. I'm unit eight D.
Yeah.
And it sounds like this property is going to abut the back of my property.
Okay.
I'm not sure how much space is is in between. And, you know, to the gentleman's point earlier, you know, that it's just a lot more people coming in and you know, we've had some issues from what I understand. I've been in this development for over four years now, and it's been fabulous. Prior to me moving into this unit, there were some issues where people were cutting through the trap through the back, and there were stones thrown at the actual home that I'm in right now. So this is a concern for me about a lot more people behind me and whether or not there's going to be any fencing to eliminate people cutting through. You know, I I guess I'm just concerned about all of what's gonna be behind me now.
Okay, one more. It's good. In one second, sir, one second.
If you just add one more thing, I walk out in the morning and I see. Just add one more thing, I walk out in the morning and I see five deer in my backyard and ten turkeys. You know, like, all this is gonna change, so that is something.
Okay, fencing is a, is a fair, is a fair request, we will, we will request this and address this issue. Mister Griffin Leahy, you wanted to speak, Mister Leahy? Take your mute button off.
Sorry about that, um. My name is Griffin Leahy, I live at two Nicholas Drive, just south of the complex.
Yep.
Um, my concerns actually are mostly concerning, uh, the exit, obviously directly next to my house. But as you said, that that was going to be physically blocked by some sort of actual device, correct?
Correct. That's, that's what they propose, however, we'll see what the fire department input on it. The fire department might say they wanna open all the time, the board might feel it should be open, closed. But right now they propose and it's closed, so that's, most likely is fire decision, more, more than police. Okay? Anything else you'd like to add, like concerns, fencing, water, lights? So we could write all these things out, so we could address it as we go.
Yes, it, it, Flax Pond is listed as a pond, but I actually suspect that it's a vernal pool and is, uh, subject to, uh, some more protections under the law. So that might be something you wanna look into with a, um.
That's, that would be conservation jurisdiction, not our jurisdiction. You understand, so they will have to go through this regardless, so that's, that's a different board. Alright, I wanna go, move to Mister Bechtel, Mister Michael Bechtel? You want us to?
Yes, uh, Michael Bechtel, I live at, uh, six Nicholas Drive.
Yeah.
Um, really, my, my first concern was the, the vernal pool, so it sounds like that's already been covered. Um, my concern with the, the passage in and out from, from Nicholas Drive, is essentially that if it is, if for some reason this is left as an open, if, if, if the fire department, you know, or somebody objects to it being closed, um, that it's gonna generate a, a huge amount of through traffic to the, um, through, from our area to the Swift Beach area, and that will be detrimental not only to our neighborhood, but to this development itself, I feel. Cause it'll drive a lot of through traffic through what's intended to be a fairly quiet neighborhood.
Alright, well, a, a, a good comment, what, what we definitely gonna be asking the applicant, we're gonna be asking for traffic studies. If for some reason the impact camp comes huge on Nicholas Drive through Camaro Lane and those lanes, and, and the fire and police agrees to this, then it'll be marked with a key, like the gentleman, Mister Adams suggested, only fire and police can access, N E M S. Uh, but this is definitely, we will be asking, I'm, I'm sure that town engineer will be asking for traffic studies if they haven't started doing them, I probably.
Yeah, actually, Mr. Chairman, we actually do have a traffic study, I believe, I believe, I missed, I believe Ken sent it around yesterday, we just completed it, uh, yesterday. So we have it, and we actually have our traffic engineer, uh, on the phone with us if we wanted to talk about the traffic study as well, so.
I don't think we have time for tonight, but we will take in consideration.
That's a big deal.
Who would like to speak?
I would like to speak.
Okay, the couple there, the name and address?
Pam Smith, Pam Smith, at fifty nine Swift Beach Road.
Sir, what's your name for the record?
Pam Smith.
Okay, okay, and what, at the fifty nine Swift Beach?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, okay, so what's your concerns?
We are right next to Littleton Drive, our house is like two houses from. And Swift Beach Road has a lot of traffic on it with a lot of accidents at the end of the road onto Route six.
We just had a fatal accident not too long ago, so there, there are fatal accidents on this road because of traffic.
And now what you're addressing ninety more units, that will be the minimum, ninety more cars. Twice as many people and cars on this street in the summertime, it is a one way down to the beach, one way back, which has more traffic. Now we're introducing twice as much traffic on this road when you also have another apartment complex across the street with more traffic in and out. I think it is a disaster waiting to happen. It's just too much.
Yeah, between.
For this little road, one way in, one way out.
And that's not even reading, uh, going on the, um, Route six over there. We need traffic lights there, if we have all this extra traffic, we need traffic lights, cause there's accidents there almost daily.
Crosswalks.
Crosswalks.
People don't even see the crosswalk.
Ma'am, ma'am, we're gonna be one, it cannot be one other time.
Don't even see the crosswalks, she's right.
We've had people hit by cars on the.
Okay, so you, you saying you're most concerned, traffic?
Traffic.
Yeah, I think there should be less houses built back there, not as many units, or have more senior units compared to, um,
Forty B.
Forty B units, just because they don't have as much cars or driving ability also, and you'd have less people. I'm not sure if elderly people are going to want to live around so many family people, they don't like the noise or the, uh, children in the playgrounds running around, you're just, more elderly housing than more of the family housing.
Okay, very well, okay, we're gonna move, thank, thank you, I'm sure, uh, just for the record, when we continue this public hearing, you will not be sent a letter again, uh, like the registered mail, so just you gotta hear when we continue it. So you, of course, welcome to attend again. Alright, we're gonna go next, uh.
I'd like, I have property on forty seven Swift.
I need, I need, I need your name, ma'am.
Donna Bennett.
Donna Bennett, yeah, and forty seven Swift Beach, yeah, go ahead, ma'am.
I, I, I already have people going through my yard to get to the trails. I've had damages done, and we speak to the young folks that cut through, they get very nasty, and it makes, it's frightening. Um, my daughter and my grandchildren live here, even though it's my property, and I'm worried about having all more people there, we have enough trouble with the Woods of Wareham. And so now we're gonna have another big development behind us, and I'm gonna say the same for the traffic, it's frightening. I live on.
I, I, sir, one second, I, I do understand, ma'am, uh, we cannot comment on other, other projects that you mentioned, so that's, that's irrelevant to our case.
No, I, I understand that, but you're talking about trails in the back, and it's right behind my house, this, that's what.
I totally, I totally understand, so, uh, uh, these are things we're gonna have to address. And like I said, when, when you go forty B, there's so much the town or boards can impose. But we will definitely address this, ask to address these matters. Okay, uh, Miss, Mister Andrew, what do you wanna add, you wanted to say something?
Andrew, I, I just wanted to say, I mean, you guys are gonna add more forty Bs when we already have public housing that is at the Woods of Wareham. You guys are gonna add more, uh, living for older people fifty five plus, while we have another fifty five plus community right behind, right behind the same thing. And then we got Nicholas Drive, which is half forty B also. So I'm, I'm just trying to figure out why we're doing so many different things in different locations while we are, while there's already an opportunity for those type of deals going on.
I, I understand, but the, the, the rules and, and the laws, it's, it doesn't work this way, unfortunately. I totally understand what you're saying, but.
So now, I have a question for Penrose, I mean, is it an option to get bought out by you guys? So that you guys don't have to deal with, you know, my neighbors, cause I'm sure my neighbors are gonna be joining in if they're not already in this meeting about this situation?
Is that what, what are you saying, Andrew, is the option to what?
Is it an option that Penrose could buy us out, buy it, buy out the neighborhood?
That, that's something you have to personally, we cannot discuss here, you'd have to inquire with them, take their address and you can inquire. Alright, uh, okay, we're gonna move, who else would like to speak?
Say something?
Yeah, yeah, who's this?
Okay, this is Maureen Andrews, I live on Four Brown Street.
Maureen, one, one second, I got all these things, Maureen Andrews?
Yes.
And you are what street?
Four Brown Street, it runs parallel to Swift Beach Road.
Okay.
I agree with what everyone said, there are accidents almost constantly on the road. And then I have a whole trail of cars on my street, Brown Street, because Swift Beach Road has an accident and there's police. And then there's Woods of Wareham, right adjacent to where I live on Brown Street, and they have all kinds of traffic and little children, and that's low subsidy. I, I just think that the area i- is crowded enough. I mean, I, in my backyard, I see deer walking by the back of my home. I see turkeys, I see wildlife, and it's beautiful. And this is all gonna be disturbed by this hu- huge complex, I, it, I, I, I just think it's sad, very, very sad, and I've been living here for thirty years. And it's so peaceful and quiet, a- and it's gonna be a nightmare, I, it's just gonna be a nightmare, sorry, sorry.
I understand, Mrs. Andrews, I, who would like to add something?
I would like to ask a question.
Yes, name and address?
Yep, we go that thirty Dennis Lane.
Thirty Dennis Lane, and last name?
Yep, I P.
I P, okay.
Uh, so I'd like to know how this is gonna affect my property value, having low income housing abutting my property?
Yeah, it's another thing.
That, do you see this, these, I mean, th- these are matter, are, are hand, and I don't know how, that's, this is something you're gonna have to hire, like an appraisal. And it's, it's irrelevant to the matter, so if it goes higher your value or lower, I don't think we could impose any, any conditions or anything on the applicant for this. So it could go higher, who knows?
This is, uh, Melissa F, thirty Dennis Lane.
Okay, well.
The first time we've heard about this project, so this is why we're bringing the concerns here.
Right.
So.
You're right, but this is the place to bring the concerns, but we are restricted by state rules. And we, I, I, I totally understand, I understand how old people have concerns and stuff. But the chapter forty B, it works completely different than the forty A. So it's apparently, as you see, they put in ninety units versus if you go to forty A, you probably can get ten or twelve houses. But, uh, these are the rules and we don't make them, we just implement them and follow them at the board. So it's not, I just want everybody to hear, this isn't the five or six of us say yes to build it or no to build it, because we wish to or not wish, this is not up to us. We just, these are the rules and we just have to follow them. You know, it's like, just like everything else, you understand?
So, not exactly, so what, what are you as the board voting on?
The, the bo- the board, when they vote on a forty B, this is how it works, pretty much.
I don't know what a forty B means, I just wanna know what it is that you're doing about this project.
What we are doing, we are restricted by state rules, and like I said, what the board does, if they are to come with a regular project, like I said, ten or twelve houses, I don't know how many you could do, based on, say fifteen houses. When you do a forty B, the board, the only thing can do, just go with minor things like, okay, put a light, put a fence, do a landscaping, change the architecture. If the, the board can easily says no, very easy, the board can says, can say no, okay, we're gonna deny you the project. But the, the applicant can go to Housing Appeal, which is very, very quick, within twenty, thirty days, that could be before a housing judge. And that their plans will be imposed to us the way they want without, say, we wanna say, tell them, okay, can you put us a fence and agrees? And they agree to put a fence. If they go to Housing Appeal, that plan will be granted as presented. So they could say, you know what, we're not giving you a fence, we're not giving you nothing, we're not working with you. Forty B is a, whoever doesn't understand that, uh, between now and next hearing, should go online and read about it. It's not much the town, unfortunately, not, not too much the town can do with it, can work with the applicant as much as they can. But it's not up to the town to say, oh, I don't want it, it's, it doesn't work, unfortunately, it doesn't work this way.
I'm just wondering, how do we get our questions addressed here?
We, 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 we get your questions, I'm writing down what you're concerned, and we're gonna pass it to the applicant, and we're gonna try to get as much as we can rectified with them and see how much they could give us. That's all what I could do.
I would like a chance to speak.
You'll have the chance, you'll have the chance to speak again, let's go to another person, who would like to?
Loretta Hackett.
Loretta Hackett, Loretta, okay, what you add?
And it's nine B Cranberry Grove Way.
Okay, go ahead, uh, Loretta.
And I'm up in the back of this development abutting there, and from what I understand, we're just less than a hundred and feet from the property line of this subdivision. Um, I just wanna iterate, maybe, um, we had trouble back when I first moved here with people, with kids cutting through. Um, not the best kids trying to break in, my unit was one that they, uh, didn't quite get in, but tried, got through the window. And I'm just, you know, reiterating, the fencing would be a good thing if we could, you know, have something like that. My other concern is so many units being built off of, uh, Swift Beach Road. There is only one way and then in and out of here for all of these houses. And we're adding another, almost a hundred units, it just seems that that's a concern on our neighbors too. I'm here on the board and I'm hearing these complaints from local neighbors, so just trying to pass it along.
Okay, uh, but I, again, I've seen a lot of people concerned with fencing, I'm sure we could ask the applicant to put a fencing. I, I'm sure there's a lot of traffic complaint, I, I, to, to be honest with you, they have a traffic studies, and I'm a builder myself, it don't matter how many times I listen to traffic studies, it don't make sense for me. It always comes in favor of the developer. Uh, the question is whether in favor or against, I don't know, I have to cer- research more, I don't know how it works with forty B. But this is something we'll address next time. Uh, I'm sure the traffic engineer will lay it out for us. Our town consulting, independent consulting, Mister Rowley, will listen to it, we try to sort it out. But then again, I don't know how it comes into play with laws with forty B.
I don't either, I'm just trying to pass that along.
Either, man, if it was a regular project, I can answer, but forty Bs are very complicated.
Yeah.
Alright, we gotta go.
There's so many houses between the.
Yeah, I understand, I, I totally understand your concern.
Yeah.
I totally understand your concern, and just keep in mind, the applicant is not, is not the devil here. The thing was put out for bids and he won the bid, so he's just a person trying to make a living like you, everyone else of us, so. I mean, they do, and this is their job, what they do, and it just happened that they want a bit simple, so, simple as this. So we go to the second person, who would like to speak?
Hi, could I speak?
Yes, your name, ma'am?
Yes, my name is, uh, Therese Gahl, I live at eight B Rockmash Road.
Eight B Rockmash, Ther- Therese, Therese, Therese?
Therese, T H E R E S E.
Okay. So you live at eight B Rockmash, okay.
That's, that's correct, yes, thank you. I share all the same concerns everyone's sharing, particularly in terms of the, um, vehicle traffic and the foot traffic. I've lived here for thirteen years, it's been quiet relatively the past four years or so, but we had multiple, multiple problems as well as other people have mentioned as far as, um, neighbors being taunted by people walking through the neighborhood, trying to destroy properties, but that thankfully is resolved, so fencing is a, is a huge thing. But another concern is the water table. How is this project going to support the water table? This is a lot of people you're bringing into this small area. We live on Rockmash Road and I believe we only have eight acres here. And water table is a big concern for me, it really is, um.
Right, okay, listen, let me explain to you again, water table and studies, these becomes under stormwater management.
Okay.
Something they have up, they have to design, and the town engineer will have to read it, there's guidelines. And if they meet guidelines, if they meet guidelines, whether their project or other projects. So apparently they cannot put a draining system, a drainage in a water table, it has to be a certain foot above the water table, it has to drain.
Right.
That's, that's the explanation that Mister Andrew was saying, he sees machines there, or Mister Gr- Griffin.
Yes.
They, they're there, they doing what they call a perk test, I'm sure that's what they doing, to design the drainage system, okay? But so, so these, these are technical things.
So they're all, all being, being addressed then by the proper folks, is what you're telling me, so that's good to hear. Couple of other questions, where I'm located, I'm at Rockmash Road, and there's the access road that runs behind our development. How far back, how far from that access road are there gonna be structures in this development?
I, I haven't seen a hard copies, we could ask the engineer.
That would be great.
The engineer, Mister Adams, you have an answer? The engineer, Mr. Adams, you have an answer, how far from Rockmash do you have on the plan? A quick answer.
Yeah, I don't, um, no, it's not my head. I don't know if, um, Rich or Andrew or Glenn could take a look and tell us. You wanna put the drawing back up?
That would be great, thank you.
And I'm sorry, which road are you saying, rock bottom?
So this is, uh, Rich Clayder with Wesley Witten. Um, the, the closest house is gonna be about ninety feet from the property line. If you go back to the aerial, um, you've got a lot there and then you've got Rockmash beyond that.
Okay, so ninety feet back from that, um, access road?
So, maybe if, maybe I could share my screen.
That would be great, thank you.
Can I speak now?
No, no, you gotta wait.
So, let me just pull up the whole project here. And this distance right here is about a hundred feet. Um, and this distance here is about a hundred feet, and then those are those houses behind there, and then Rockmash is back over here to the, to the back.
Okay, okay.
So it's that, that full lot width and then another hundred feet, um, from the nearest houses to those property lines.
Okay.
All right, Rockmash, let me, ma'am, is Rockmash behind the Cranberry Cottage, the breakfast place?
Yes, it is, you come, you come down, yes, down Brown Street, and then you take your first right, and that's Rockmash.
You, you're very far, you, you pretty, at least three hundred feet, I think.
Really?
Anyway, anyway, I, I, I heard a lot of people saying that people walk in and vandalism and.
Yes.
Yes, but just to speak on the favor of the applicant, that's probably a good project, because that's, there'll be people there, so nobody could cross, just, just as far. All right, ma'am, who said who wants to speak? The lady?
Yes, can I speak now?
Yes, I need you, thank you, very welcome, that Therese. Uh, what's your name, ma'am?
My name is Connie Babula, B A B U L A. I live at fifty seven Swiss Beach Road.
Yep.
That's the corner of Swiss Beach and, um, Littleton Drive. And one of my main concerns is the exit, just one exit, with all that traffic coming from the housing there, down to Littleton and right at the corner here, and it's very dangerous as it is. That, that's one of my concerns. Are they gonna have another entrance? I mean, they should.
Well, this is what they suggested on Nicholas Drive, on the other side, but that's, then again, uh, we'll see what the fire department come up with.
But you make sure that you mention it?
I, of course we will, of course, it is in the plan, it's, it's up for discussion. So if the fire department and police said, you know what, it's probably best to open it. But then again, it might be very, it might impact so much that, we'll see how the traffic impact, the traffic study impact, and we'll ask our town engineer to explain it for us, okay?
Okay, well, like they said, Swiss Beach itself, it's like a one-way. Thank you.
All right. Uh, I would, I, what, what I'd like, uh, uh, I would like to, from Ken, Mr. Buckland, to give some more background on, on the process. Can you, Kenny? So this way, I'll explain more for the neighbors.
I'd be happy to.
Okay, go ahead, Ken.
Uh, the first time I saw this property was about four years ago, when Derek Sullivan, the town administrator, pointed out to me that it was a piece of land that uh, was, was, um, unused at this time and, and had an opportunity for, uh, something to happen. Uh, I looked at it in terms of residential development and, um, brought it forward to, uh, to continue the discussion on the, on the potential future use of this property. What the redevelopment authority did when it was created was had an opportunity to look at this, at the same, uh, same piece of land and the opportunities that, uh, could take place on, on this parcel. Uh, we went to town meeting, uh, the board of selectmen, uh, put the warrant article on to allow the selection of the, of the redevelopment authority to, uh, use this piece of land and, and look for a developer who can make the, uh, quality development that the town could be proud of. Um, we, we were told by town meeting that what, what they wanted was to see as, as much, uh, senior housing as possible. So we took that as a, uh, one of the tasks that, um, uh, we had to, uh, address the, uh, the, uh, the, 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 uh, development project that would take place on there. With, um, the help of Mass Housing, the premier affordable housing pri- uh, agency in the state, uh, we were, we provided support with from, by Mass Housing to go through a, a, an RFP process, a request for proposals. And in that, in doing that, uh, we, we were, were provided with three proposals from developers. Uh, Penrose was the only one that had senior housing included in their, in their project proposal. And it would seem that, that that was a, um, an opportunity that we couldn't pass up. Uh, Penrose has a lot of experience with senior housing and a lot of experience with affordable housing. And between, uh, um, Penrose and Mass Housing, we've been able to advocate to the state for support to our project that is unusual. And the two elements, the senior housing and the, uh, the, the workforce housing are being, uh, supported at the same time. Uh, we think this is a, uh, something that is, uh, appropriate to, uh, to go forward. So the easiest way to proceed was to go through a, the forty B, uh, special permit process, the, the comprehensive permit. And, and to advance the, uh, through the comprehensive permit process with.
You don't have a same with it, then.
Somebody, somebody speaker, would you please stop speaking? You're interrupting.
Uh, the, the, uh, the process that we followed is, is, uh, a typical forty B process, but it's a, uh, one where, uh, what we have is something that the, uh, the town could be, uh, could be proud of, because it has, uh, significant improvements over all the other forty B projects that have been proposed by private developers. Uh, it has taken the, uh, the, um, uh, the goals that we've set for the, for the town, for, for the quality of development and, uh, included it in the proposal that's before you now. Uh, I, that doesn't mean that we don't have a, a reason to, uh, consider the, uh, the impacts and, uh, the issues that that the neighborhood has to address. And that people think are, uh, important to, uh, to, to mitigate or to provide some solution for. And we'll be exploring that in the, uh, in the coming weeks as we go through the process. But we found that the, uh, the forty B process was, uh, the most efficient to, uh, get the opportunity for people to, uh, have an input and to review the project. So that's, that's where we are in, in, uh, in the, in the process that we've taken so far.
All right, thank you, Ken. All right, we go back to the neighbors, who would like to speak? The others, neighbors who would like to speak?
I would.
Okay, name, sir?
Calvin Rockthuff. And I live in nine A Cranberry Grove Way.
Okay.
I'm very concerned where it's going to be so close to our property. And we're gonna, to try and keep people out of our backyard is almost impossible. And, uh, go ahead.
Uh, my name is Nancy Rapcliff. I also live at nine A Cranberry Grove Way. Uh, from hearing, um, the, uh, uh, information that Mr. Buckland just gave us, um, I, I'm reading that the bottom line is we have to suck it up, because this development is going in whether we want it or not. Um, and I hope that the people from Penrose are gonna listen to our needs. Right now, they haven't said a word. They've sat there and been very quiet, haven't said a word about any of our feelings. My question is, how are we gonna know when the next meeting is that we can attend? There's a lot to be discussed here, a lot. We, I've been sitting on this phone, on this computer since six thirty tonight, it is now ten thirty. We have barely, barely touched on things that need to be addressed. So we need to know when the next meeting is gonna be with Penrose. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy and Calvin. The, the reason they're not speaking, because I'm not allowing them, so I'm giving you a chance. There'll be a lot of discussion. And we, at the end of the hearing tonight, we will continue this public hearing. And like I said to the previous people spoke before you guys, uh, that there will be no, uh, certified mails again, so you will follow up on the paper and you're gonna hear from us when is the next meeting. A lot, a lot of these, the project, like you said, will have, it is what it is, we'll suck it up. Unfortunately, I don't know how to say it, it's probably true. However, you could, we could work with the developer, we could work with developer. For instance, you have an issue with people crossing. And I, as I heard from you, fencing is, is a key. I heard from Loretta fencing. I heard from, uh, who else, Maureen on Cranberry Grove, also fencing. So this is three, four people suggesting fencing. So I think, uh, of, of course, with the applicant listening, and I'm sure we could come to, uh, the, uh, together to cooperate together to put a fencing, and I'm sure they'll agree to it. So again, there'll be a lot more discussion, and like you said, it's late, but it'll be more and more hearings, and everybody will start to get the idea more and will play their concerns, whether we could address them or not. And like I said, unfortunately, we can't address all the concerns, we are restricted by the forty B statute. So I wanna go to the second person, uh, who would like to speak?
You speak. Yes, I'd like to have, say a word.
Yes, sir, your name, sir, and address?
Steve Sainte-Lay's, four Brown Street.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Yes, I'd like to know, we, we all know that this is gonna take place. I would like to know when ground, ground is gonna be broken and how long the construction is gonna take.
Uh, Mr. Counselor, Attorney, I forget his name. Counselor?
I, I can speak, I can speak to that.
What's the statute of, I mean, what's the statute of forty B? When do we have to close the public hearing, Ben? There's a statute.
Close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, you have a hundred and eighty days from the opening of the public hearing to close the public hearing without extension of time agreed to by the applicant. You have another forty days to reduce your decision to writing, and you have fourteen days after that to file it with the town clerk.
Okay, a hundred and eighty days to close the public hearing from that.
Yes, a hundred and eighty to close, forty to write it up.
From the application date?
From the date the public hearing opens.
Okay, so.
No, no, it is from, it is, it is from the application date, you're right.
Application, and we have forty days to render a decision?
After the close of the public hearing.
Forty days to render, and how long appeal period, twenty days?
Fourteen days to file with the town clerk and twenty day appeal period.
Okay.
Talking about building it.
Excuse me, building it, uh, uh.
Yeah, so the construction schedule, um, you know, probably, probably like a fourteen to sixteen month construction schedule, once we get our financing.
Okay, to answer your question, Steve?
Yes, thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, uh, next person who would like to speak?
Ken?
Yes, yes.
There's a lady with the name of Jenny, she needs to unmute to get her
Okay.
her question across.
All right, okay.
Linda, you are on under Jenny and you're muted, so unmute.
One second, Charlie. All right, while, while Linda figuring that out, I wanna listen to the town engineer, Mr. Charles Rowley, go ahead, Charlie. Yes. Can you guys hear?
No.
No.
Oh, that's for everybody.
I don't know where my microphone is.
Is Charlie going on a phone through your system or something? He's not even on Zoom?
Uh, he's not, no, he can't go through, so that's why I have him here, but I don't know where my microphone is.
Can we hold Charlie's comments until he can be on an actual Zoom connection, so everybody can hear him? It's, it's really not fair for people not to be able to hear him.
All right, Charlie, wanna try now? Can you guys hear?
No, we can't hear.
Unfortunately, Charlie, no, but I'm, I'm sure, do you wanna pass a message quick to me? I could pass it. Okay.
Can I ask a question while he's discussing that? Ken, has, has the ninety-nine year lease been signed yet? When does that get signed?
One, one second, I'm listening to, okay, Charlie, I'll pass the message. Mr. Rowley saying, Mr. Char- I'm sorry, uh, Chris, he, Mr. Charlie's talking and you guys can't hear him. He's, he has concern about the water table. This area has a very high water table, uh, and he was concerned, the design they doing, it might not work. So, I guess, I guess Charlie and to the engineer of the applicant, these are sound, we have to sort out, once they come up with that design, then we, I guess we'll review it. And if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. I, I can't answer now, and apparently they started the, the perk test now. So we'll wait to hear what happens. Mr. Conti? All right, okay, Mr. Rowley has other questions, I guess, next time he address them. Mr. Conti, what do you wanna say?
I, I was just wondering, I know there's, I saw something in there about ninety-nine year lease that would be signed, and I was wondering, when, when does that get signed?
That gets signed when the project is turned over to the, um, to Penrose.
Did that explain it, Richard, uh, Chris?
Um, yes, yes, it did. So, so, so it's not really a done deal yet, right?
That's right, it's not, it's not signed yet.
Okay, thanks.
All right, next person?
Hello, my name is Linda Kawadla. I live at five C Cranberry Grove Way. I am one of thirty-six residents, and we are the sole abutters. Most, we are all abutters to this property. And I am very concerned about the one, two, and three-bedroom apartments that are going up. When you have a three-bedroom, that means you have families. What type of families? Are they going to have children? Are they allowed to have adults in there? Uh, that, if that's the case, it means more school buses, it means more hospitals. Uh, it means more firemen. Uh, the traffic is horrible.
All right.
Yeah, we need citizens.
Okay, Linda, Linda, I do under, I do understand your concern. A, a three-bedroom, in a project like this, you mandated to a percentage to have a three-bedroom. You cannot say, oh, I'm not gonna do a three-bedroom. And we cannot men, it's illegal to mandate how many kids and how many children. We cannot discuss this. This is, it's very illegal to say, oh, I wanna know how many kids go to school, how many kids you have. This is something the board will not discuss.
But we are paying extra for all of this. I don't mind paying for schools, I don't mind paying.
Linda, we cannot discuss school in this manner. This, at forty B, it's kinda illegal to discuss it. Uh, counselor, can you clarify this for the applicant, for the people, sir? Counselor?
I, I also feel.
You're unmuted. What, Linda, let, let, you can hear it from the attorney.
So, under chapter forty B, local concerns have been defined to include the typical suspects in any development application, including traffic, stormwater, uh, noise, lights, all of those things are well within bounds. However, certain things are not within the purpose of the law, that is, A, to protect property values, that's already been adjudicated, and B, to eliminate children coming into the school system. Massachusetts is a unique state, you, uh, the guarantee of education to all children is free. So as a result, uh, education is beyond the jurisdiction of control here. Uh, it doesn't, it doesn't matter how many kids are coming into school. You've accommodated children in your school system for three hundred years, and all of them have come, or most of them have come from unsubsidized projects. Now these projects that are subsidized are entitled to equal treatment.
I am.
Thank you, thank you, counsel.
I am not concerned about the. I am not concerned about the children going to school. What I'm concerned about is the traffic, the bus stops, the, for the, for the children. Also, you have to have more hospital people. These people are not gonna go into downtown Boston if they're hurt. And it's a senior center here.
It's a little community hospital.
And it's a small community. You have a small hospital. We're trying to build up a newer ER to make it better. Uh, we're really working very hard here. And the seniors are really suffering for this. You're going to bring low income in here.
No, no, ma'am, no, you can't, you cannot, like, say low income, you cannot, you cannot stand to degrade people. This is not how it works. Whoever's going there, they're less fortunate, and some of them are senior citizens like yourself. So we cannot, can't point fingers, say this and that, and low income and that. I, I can't allow this on this public hearing. Let's move to the second person, please.
Can I ask another question?
Second person, please.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, it's Chris.
I can't, I can't hear you, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Not really.
She was not before.
I don't know who she was.
And Nasi, this woman's already spoke once. Can't we let somebody else, let's give everybody a fair shot instead of giving.
Right, and I didn't know she did. So who, I don't have the screen in front of me. Who would like to speak next? Somebody didn't speak yet. Who would like to speak?
I was wondering, can we get a copy of the presentation that they made today?
Ma'am, what's your name, ma'am, for the record?
My name's Nancy Radcliffe.
Nancy?
Yeah.
And what's your address? Address?
Nine A Cranberry Grove Way. I already spoke. I was wondering if we can get a copy of Penrose's presentation.
Sure, I'll make it available.
Okay, Kenny, is the, is the presentation online, if they go online?
We can put it online.
Okay, can you make sure you do it, Sonia tomorrow, so people can review?
Maybe up tomorrow morning.
All right, you get that, Nancy?
Yeah, that'd be terrific. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you. Okay, who else would like to speak?
Ask another question? Pam Smith from fifty-nine.
Sure, sure, go ahead, make it quick. And you, you Donna, are you Donna?
No, Pam Smith, fifty-nine Smith Beach Road.
Pam, fifty-nine Smith Beach, go ahead.
I was just wondering about the sewer hookups. I thought that our town sewer was not allowing anyone to hook up at this time.
I, I, this is something the sewer department will have to answer. However, I have a letter from here. Apparently, they have.
Pass the buck, pass the buck.
Ma'am, who speak? Can you, it's too many, please don't speak, unless you are, you asked to. So the Mr. Campina, he just have like some request, or actually some law, like, things he use standard, like grinder pumps and stuff, but in his letter, does not show, there's no sewer capacity. So apparently, we do have the sewer capacity. And even if we don't, I think with the forty B, it doesn't matter. So we have to.
But you have to allow them to hook up?
Kinda, yes, unfortunately, yes. Okay, next.
May I speak? I'm, I'm under Jenny, but my name is Susan Dyke.
Okay, Susan, what, what's your address, Susan?
Four C Cranberry Grove Way.
Go ahead, Susan.
I, I was just wondering, is this phase one, all that there's gonna be yours? There gonna be a phase two to follow? For more?
Adams?
No, these nine, three units are what we'll do. Oh, we're gonna.
That's it, period, time here, okay.
Yep, that's it.
That was one of my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Okay, who would like to speak? Who else? Anyone else would like to speak? All right, I wanna, I wanna go back to the board, the quick comments from each board members, who, what do they like the applicant to come with answers next time? Let's, let's start by Mr. Sample. Would you like to see these people come up with next time?
Mr. Chairman, could it, would, I mean, I'm happy to answer those questions, too. Would it be, would it be helpful? I can, I can make some general statements about some of these things, too, that might be helpful for some of the board members as well. If I could, to address some of these, you know, some of these, these comments, if that would be acceptable.
Two minutes.
Sure. So, so I think, you know, kind of big picture, I think, I think I kinda wanna sort of reset this a little bit. And, and, you know, Penrose is really proud of the stuff that we do. And I think if you go to our website, I think you'll be really pleased with the types of projects that we build and the places we build them and the high quality that we build them at. We are in the business of doing this. We are interested in doing projects like this because, and to stand, and to do right by communities like you, because we wanna do this again, and we wanna do this elsewhere. And so I think if you look on our website, you're gonna see, you know, some really high quality developments that, that you're gonna be, that will make you proud. And, and what we're trying to do here is something that we're gonna make, we're trying to do to make Wareham proud. You know, this is not public housing. This is not section eight housing. This is private housing that happens to use some subsidies to help get it built. And this housing, the people that live here will have to pay rent. There'll be a few units that will have some section eight subsidies, a small number. But the, but the vast majority will be residents that will pay their own rent. And so these units are benefiting the people that live in your community now. They're the police folks, they're the teachers, they're the daycare workers, they're the, the people that work in the service industry. Those are, those are all the people that this development's gonna serve. And it's increasingly important that we try to serve residents in, in communities like Wareham and other places, because they're getting priced out. And so we think that that's, that's really valuable. And we came to this town in particular because of there was the RFP process, because there was the interest in doing this, and because we wanted to, to be part of this community. I know there's been, I know there's a lot to absorb with the site. I know there's been a, a, a discussion a little bit about the number of units. Bear in mind, this is a sixteen acre site. So putting ninety units on here is not a, a, a large number. We could easily have done three times as many units on this site. But we're not interested in that. We're not interested in that because that's not what the community wants, that's not what the community needs. The idea on this development was to try to keep it as, as natural as possible. And so if, one of the things you, you, if we could put, if you wanted to put up that slide again, the slide that Rich showed, you can see how the development is all clustered into the center. All of these units are very far away from the abutting properties. And we've tried to go out and meet with a bunch of neighbors that actually directly abutted it. I had a chance to meet with Griffin and Alan, two people that were on this call, and actually meet and talk with them about what we're doing, and, and how we're trying to accommodate them. You know, one of the things that we're trying to do as a good neighbor is that over time, a lot, there's not been a delineation where this land ends, right? So a lot of the people that live up against it have actually put their sheds and other things on the property. We're not interested in moving those off. We're gonna leave those. There may be one particular case in Griffin's case where we may have to move it a little bit, but we've agreed to move it, and we'll do it at our cost and our expense, so we'll move it on his property. Everybody else, we're looking to give them a, a license to allow them to keep their stuff there. And we're trying to be, you know, as good a neighbor as we can be. These projects also, I think it's important to know in terms of how they're managed. We're, we're not interested in buying, in, in building this and then leaving. You know, we're gonna be a long-term neighbor for this community. The way that these properties are structured is that the benefits are delivered to an investor. We have to bring an investor to do this over a fifteen year period of time. And so we owe, we owe those, that, that investor the benefits on day one as much as we owe them on year fifteen. And during that fifteen year period, we're on the hook as a guarantee. So the property needs to look as, as good as it does on day one as it does on, in year fifteen. And so I think you're gonna find that these projects are, are good and strong. There's actually studies that have shown that, that projects like this actually increase values in the neighborhood. They don't decrease them. And so I think, you know, if you look at our stuff, you're gonna see that, you know, this is not gonna be a detriment to society. It, it should be, it'll be something that the community can be proud of.
All right, I gotta, I gotta cut you short. Let me go to the board members, I'll send you some homework. All right, we're gonna start, Mr. Adam, Mr. Sample, what do you wanna send these people, the homework? What do you want them to come up with next time? Richard? All right, Jimmy?
Uh, excuse me, I was muted, I'm back in.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Richard. What do you like, what do you like to have some question for next time?
I'm hearing that the seniors in the neighborhood are having troubles with younger people with disrespect. And now they're turning around and you're gonna put all that in one pot. Just, just, that is the only, I'm just making a statement. I'm just hearing it sounds like they're having problems, and now you're creating a hornet's nest. So I'm just, that's just my point.
Okay, all right, very well. Veronica?
Um, I'm hearing the concerns regarding traffic. It makes me wonder if this is the time when we could approach, I don't know who would be, we would be approaching, but for traffic lights at Sandwich Road and Route Six.
We'll.
There are accidents there constantly.
We'll see what the traffic study come up with, and we'll, we'll go from there. Okay.
I just do wanna say, because you've made several comments, and we've had this come up a lot of times, those traffic studies don't always support what actually is happening. So as a board, do we have to have a traffic study support what we know happens, or just go up, you know?
We, we'll see, we'll, once they come up with the study, we'll see what our town engineer says, and we'll see, we'll talk to our attorney and see what we can and can't do. I'm not too experienced, and that's just like all of you. We'll, we'll, we'll have to figure it out and play by ear. All right, Jim, what do you wanna send these people with?
And Nasi, before Jim speak, can I make a comment for you?
Yes, Mrs. Slaver.
I put it into the chat, I guess it doesn't, people haven't read it. Through what we call the Serp Ed Commission, which takes care of the traffic in southeast Mass, what they call the SMMPO. About two months, two and a half months ago, I made arrangements with Serp Ed to put a traffic light at Swiss Beach Road and Route Six. It's on the TIP program, it's twenty-five percent completed engineering. The best I could do was to get it on the TIP program for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, which means it would sometime between July first of twenty twenty-three and June of twenty twenty-four. The state will be, because it is a state road, not a town road, the state will be putting a traffic light with new crosswalks at that intersection.
Thank you.
Alan, does this pro, does this project have any bearing on that, that we could get that pushed through sooner? Because we are forced by the state to, to approve.
I can't, because again, it's the, the TIP program is only so much money per year. And I was able to get it pushed up because it was originally gonna be part of the Route Six redo that they're talking about, which would have been twenty twenty-six or twenty twenty-seven. I got it pulled out and pushed up to twenty twenty-four all by itself.
All right, thank you, Alan. All right, Jimmy? Jim, I still don't need Jake?
Um, nothing for tonight.
All right, Jake, nothing. Okay, Mr. Conti, Chris?
Um, well, there, there is some stuff in the chat that, you know, wasn't mentioned. Like, I think Jim mentioned in there that, you know, until Wareham reaches ten percent, that we have to allow these forty B projects in Wareham. And I don't know, I thought, you know, I, I thought they did a good job with the, the initial presentation of the whole package. I don't have really much homework for him right now.
Very well. Okay, with that being said, like, again, like I said, if you, Counselor, if for the next time, and Mr. Adams, so we need a fifty-three G account. We just need a statement on a safe harbor, get your sewer together, maybe some water modeling, fire department review, traffic studies, stormwater management, are you working on, as I understand, landscape and architect? And your architecture plans, I'm, I'm sure you have a licensed architect, the plan stamped with the licensed architect corrections, Adams?
Yeah, I mean, that's what TIT's here, that, that, that they're here, you know, to go, you know, so this is the next one as well. You have the plans, yes.
So you got, you got what I asked for, you, you heard me, right?
Yeah, yeah, stormwater, a fifty-three G account. We have the, you have the traffic study.
Landscape and architect.
What are you looking for on the landscape and architect?
We just need the architect stamped plans. Has to have a landscape and architect.
You have those.
Okay, very well. I don't have the whole file due to COVID. I have very little of your file. You need a water department, like, review, see what they think, the flow test, that. Okay, so you need something from the water department.
We've done a flow test.
Okay, okay, so we need this on your package, and the sewer, apparently, you had the comment from Mr. Campina, right, on that?
Yeah, we've already, we've already been in contact with him.
Okay, I, I do, a, a quick, I don't wanna get into this too much. I know he wants a grinder pump for every building.
Rich, do you wanna talk about that? Do you wanna talk about where we are with that?
When, yeah, quick, what do you got?
Just, just real quickly, we understand his concern, the intent, the intention is to keep, you know, wipes and other things out of the system. And so we'll be looking at the best way to do that, the easiest to maintain, and, and something that he will approve. So we'll be working with him on the details on that.
I, I suggest, that's way too many pumps. I suggest one big twenty thousand gallon tank with a backup twenty thousand with two alternate pumps, alternating. This way, it's, you have all your gravity to one tank, two pumps, maybe small generator to back it up. But that's something you have to take it up with Mr. Campina.
That's what I'm looking at.
Okay, very good. So I guess we have enough to do, so we're gonna have to continue, yes?
One more thing, I think there was something from the conservation administrator. There's, there's one thing from conservation about, they have to submit something to the conservation office, notice of intent.
Right.
That, I don't think that was mentioned.
That's, yeah, that's that thing. One second, please, I wanna see what Charlie was. Go ahead, Charlie.
Yeah, I don't have a full set of plans to give you a cost estimate, so I'm suggesting that they put an initial amount of twenty-five hundred dollars in fifty-three G account, and we'll see where it goes.
All right, very good.
Mr. Chairman, I talked with Ken Buckland today, and he suggested an amount to me, and we'll have it in within four or five days.
Right, twenty-five hundred to start with.
Okay, if that's.
Okay, from the fifty-three G.
That remains the number, thank you.
Okay, very well. So we're gonna, we're gonna, to everyone who's listening, we're gonna, hope, continue, we're gonna have, we have a special meeting just passed on January sixth, two thousand twenty-one, so you guys.
Is that your, is that your next meeting?
That's our next, the twenty-third, the town hall is closed, so the January sixth, twenty-one. So let's, can we get a motion to continue to the twenty, to the sixth, January?
No moved.
So we have a motion by Jim to continue this matter till January sixth, two thousand twenty-one. Do I have a second?
I can, that, Jim, Morrison.
Okay, all in favor, state their name and say aye.
Yeah.
Hi, Chris Conti.
Veronica Debonese, aye.
Oh, you mean, I'm being all the others.
Chris Sample, aye.
Okay, and Nasi Alcali, okay, to all the neighbors again who's listening, you will not get a mail again, so the January sixth, you could follow up online, on the paper, on the board of town hall, January sixth is the next hearing. And Sonia, just for the, for the record, just put at the end of the agenda, so the small applicant don't have to wait all night.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, there was, there was a, I think one, I just caught something in the chat room. Sorry, I haven't been able to look at all of it. There was something in the chat room about getting in touch with, with us. I can provide my contact information, if that's helpful.
What is that about?
I mean, you can reach me, my phone number.
Oh, okay, you wanna put your chatroom, go ahead, say.
Yeah, you can reach me at cadams@penrose.com. And you can reach me at nine seven eight, five zero zero eight zero three eight. So I'm happy to talk to anybody anytime.
Everyone get that? All right, very good.
Could you, um, could you put that on? There's, there's a little bit of chat going on. Charlie, do you know how to put a, a chat on there? Could you type that information so people could?
Sure.
Oh, awesome.
That way they, they can look at it and copy it, and if you, if you don't mind, that would be helpful.
Nope. It's in the chat. There's the two N's, don't forget that.
I see it, thank you.
Cadams@penrose.com, nine seven eight, five hundred.
Kenny, what was the, what was this hearing, twenty-eight dash twenty? Was, I don't have the agenda, I don't know what it did.
I'll tell you in a minute. Thirty dash twenty.
Thirty dash twenty?
Thirty dash twenty.
All right, thank you. All right, Fox, so I guess we'll see you January sixth. Thank you. All right, any other concerns before we adjourn, gentleman, lady, ma'am?
I gotta.
January sixth.
January sixth.
Yeah.
I think that, yeah, during chatting while you were doing it, Sonia, very graciously, suggested that we get Charlie in on a machine where he can talk and everybody can hear him.
I'm sure we'll sort all this out next time.
Future meetings, yeah.
All right, very well. Anything else before we get a motion to adjourn?
January sixth is gonna be a very busy night.
Yeah, it is. It is. Yeah, it is, it is. All right, can I have a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second, Richard Sample.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
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 All right, and Nasi Alcalasi, aye, so, okay, I guess we'll see you, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and we'll see you. Thank you.
Thank you.
January, thank you, thank you.
Bye, y'all.
Bye-bye. Thank you.
Thank you.